Caitlin, is that you on? Oh, oh my goodness. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, I can.
All right, some of the rest of you are muted. I was in gallery view, sorry. Okay, so who do we have? We have Ben, Bill, Becca, Dennis. All right. We will wait two more minutes. Or one minute. Has anyone heard? No, Lori's joining. I did not get an email.
I haven't heard.
Here. Okay. All right. Let's get started. It's 10:03. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I think we have Ben, we have three, so we have a quorum. Is that enough?
Yes, that's good. Move on.
All right, so calling the meeting to order and present are, if you could acknowledge your presence verbally, Becca Powell.
Yeah.
Say I'm here. We have to say it verbally. It's a, it's a roll call.
I'm here. Sorry, I guess you didn't hear me, sorry.
Hey, sorry, I didn't. Bill Dowling.
I'm here.
Joanne Thorman is here, and present also is Dennis Dever, and, thank you, and Ben Sumner. And, okay, agenda, call to order. Oh, and also Philippe Donald, just say present, please.
Present.
Good, excellent. We were just starting. Okay, call to order. Review the previous minutes. Have you all had a chance to take a look at the minutes? I move that we accept them as written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill Dowling, seconds. Any discussion about the minutes? You all okay with them?
Yes.
Sounds good. Okay, so Joanne Thorman accepts the minutes as written. Becca Powell.
Yeah.
Bill Dowling.
Yes.
Philippe Donald.
Yes.
Good. That's done. Next is, there's two main businesses we need to do today. One is, I hope you had a chance to look at Dennis's split districts, section H, that he highlighted on page three of the document that I forwarded to you. It was basically to clarify what we were working on earlier and giving him some, give him some direction when such an occurrence happens. Do you have anything you want to say in about one minute, Dennis, before we move on?
No.
Okay. Does that meet your needs? So if I'm to understand correctly, what this is telling us is, when split districts occur, there will be buffer zones that are required and they will be managed by the DEP, the natural resource. In other words, you're just giving a heads up to people that when split districts occur, there will be buffer zones and they're, but they are yet to be determined. Is that right?
No, um.
I got that.
And I wouldn't say there, there will be buffer zones, but there's, and of course, I don't have the luxury of having, having made the map, but having looked at that, our, our split districts, and then gone to, say, habitat maps under Department of Industry and Fisheries and Wildlife, and knowing about the buffer zones that DEP manages, something's there, and that's probably what it is. And that just, so when I see that, or when we see that split district, and you see a resource protection band, that you have to look at another map, try to find out what's there, but it's kind of, it's going to be kind of obvious. If it's going along a freshwater wetland, it's a moderate to low value water, what do you call them, waterfowl area, or something like that. I, there, there's a whole bunch of different ones that manage differently, and they may not be managed by the town, which is another good reason to have it there, because it, it just says that, yeah, there's something here, it may not be managed by the town, but it's a buffer zone managed by DEP, etc.
Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand. The reason we're needing to add section H is to acknowledge that split districts exist, and when.
Well, exactly, yeah, it's, it's on the map. Let's explain what it is like the other districts.
Okay.
Yeah. Then someone can argue otherwise, you know.
All right, fair enough. I, well, this is what we'll do. We'll move, we'll second, and see if any of you guys had discussion, and then we'll vote on accepting this as Dennis has written it, and then we'll, or not, and then we'll move on to tackling this other thing. So I move that we accept section H split, split districts as Dennis has written. Do I have a second?
Second.
Bill Dowling, seconds. Does anyone have any comment or discussion about it? Seems like we're okay with it. Should we just go on and vote?
Yeah, what you would do now is vote that you agree this is the way to go. The planning board is endorsing this, basically. And then we go to the Board of Selectmen, and they will decide if we want to go further from there, and do they maybe want to change a little bit, then we have a public hearing. And then you'll probably be at the same meeting with your tower ordinance.
Okay, sounds good. So it's been moved.
Yeah.
It's, it's, but sorry, I missed that. Did someone have, want to say something?
I'm sorry, Joanne, I just thanked Dennis for putting in the work on this.
Okay, so it's been moved, it's been seconded, and so how do you vote, Bill Dowling?
In favor, aye.
Philip Donald, Philippe Donald?
Aye.
Okay, Becca, how do you vote? Becca Powell?
Aye.
And Joanne Thorman votes aye. This is, we'll move on to the selectmen as accepted or approved. And now, so, we now have this tower ordinance, which, a tower is cell towers, cell, we need to come up with a title. I'm not sure if we actually nailed that down. I know we nailed down our purpose, but I'm not sure we nailed down the title. So this is my goal, and tell me what, how you guys think of it. I think we're going to just move really quickly through this, finish it. Anna, Ben, I have a question for you. If we go through this document with some little edits, clearly changing the name of the town, maybe some small wording changes here or there, we move through this document, does, and is it your role as secretary to type up a document that we could then vote on in a very quick meeting, to then give it, send it to the selectmen for the first meeting in July? Is that, tell me the protocol on this.
I can do that. Yeah, that's fine. I know Dennis has normally done the zoning ordinance item, because that was specialty, but just taking your edits and, and putting into a document for you all to approve, I, I can do that.
All right, and Dennis, does that seem like a good plan?
Uh, yeah, yeah. Traditionally, the planning board wasn't active on that stuff. It's great to see you are. I, I would, I've done, basically would write up things that I thought were important to change, and it was only like the really urgent stuff. I didn't get into details much, and it's great now that you're doing some stuff, and then I'll present the, the other, the split district thing.
Well, I'm, I'm not doing this because I absolutely love tackling this. If we've departed protocol, can you tell me what we are doing, which we don't need to be doing?
Um, no, I, I think you're doing, you're doing just fine. The tower ordinance is, is, it sounds like it's originating from the planning board, and Ben really rep, I guess Ben is the town office staffer representing the planning board, and if Ben has no problem drafting that, that's great. The split district addition, I originated and did up, and I'm content to do that. And in the future, we, we can decide how we want to do future ordinance changes, whether you want me to do the research and do them, or, you know, I guess we can just, we'll cross those bridges when we come to them.
So normally, in the past, when there were ordinance changes, and, and Bill, you can help with this, you would just redraft it and submit it to the selectmen rather than me loading up Ben's plate? I just want to know how it's normally done.
Well, I, I always did them in the past, because I was the only one that really knew what was going on with it. And, but I only did things that, like, for example, when we, we just got the new, the new, we go to, when we got our, our shoreline zoning ordinance to follow a standard format, that was something I knew we had to do, because what we had before just was not practically workable. And I've done those few things over the last couple of years, now maybe three or four, who knows, time flies. But it's, it's now where we're at a place where we can, we can do the job reasonably efficiently, the way it's supposed to be done, because we've got our ordinance set up for us.
Okay.
So that's, I was just doing stuff like from a code enforcement officer's point of view. This, we've got to change this to make it work. And we've, I, we've done that. I think we've, well, we've pretty much completed that with the split district addition, but as time goes on, we find other things, and it's, things are different now. We have a proactive planning board, and we can decide how we, who wants to do those drafts in the future. I say, I, I, I've done them in the past. Generally, I do it in the winter, you know, that's the time to do that kind of stuff, but I, I, we can decide whether Ben wants to do them, or you want to keep it like this, where I'll introduce some things, you'll introduce some things, maybe Ben does the planning board introductions, I do the code enforcement. Just see how it goes.
All right, well, let's move on with this. And not really, we'll just figure out who's going to type it up. Maybe Ben would prefer that you put the draft together and submit it to the selectmen.
Oh, I'm pretty sure I don't do it in the summer.
But let's, let's.
Because right now, I'm, I'm too blocked.
Okay, I'm getting message that my internet is unstable, and hopefully it'll stay stable enough, long enough for. Okay, so we started this. It says tower ordinance on the, on the cover page, and then on the inside, it says, "This ordinance shall be known and cited as a wireless telecommunications facility, facilities citing ordinance." And let's come up with a name. Clearly, we got to change the dates and the owl's head and all that stuff. I don't think we need to talk about those sorts of things. Let's just come up with the name. I, personally, I don't think it should be citing ordinance. It should be wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance. How do you feel about that? Does anyone have a comment? No?
Um, I know we talked, just a second.
I can hear you. Go ahead, Bill.
Okay, I know we talked last time about how inclusive this ordinance is, and I'm sorry that I don't remember how we came down on titling it in such a way that it would not, that it would, wouldn't control, you know, tall wind towers or personal towers.
Um, it does, when we get, we haven't gotten to the exceptions part. I know Philippe had an issue with ham station, ham radio stations, and those are all listed under the exemptions, and we can certainly add to the exemptions, but for the purposes of titling, we did have a conversation about wind towers, and the conversation said, Dennis said, "Let's just stay focused on what this is about." And so basically, this is about cell towers. So if we said wireless telecommunications facilities ordinance, this addresses wireless telecommunications facilities, and does not, there was also a concern about it addressing Axiom Towers. And I can't really remember the results of that discussion. Is there a concern there that we will be inhibiting? It won't inhibit what's already there, if I'm not mistaken, but will this, do we need to add that as an exemption? Or, or, I can't remember how we resolved that dilemma.
Yeah, I don't think we had, had resolved it. We did discuss it. Something, to me, there's something to be said, tower ordinance, so anything over a certain height will, will come before the board, and we can then fine tune it, whether it's wireless or wind or bubble telescope, you know, I don't know.
We are switching tacks, because when I talked about it being, addressing towers and being more generic, there seemed to be an inclination not to go in that direction. I, I mean, if the purpose of this tall things from ending up somewhere on the Cranberry Isles, then tower ordinance is probably the right name. If the purpose of this ordinance is to prevent cell tower companies from putting cell towers, or not to prevent, to manage that, then we should probably call it that. So I would, I would like two seconds of feedback from everybody on this matter. Philippe, start.
Uh, I think that we should focus on structures that are receiving and emitting radio frequencies. And I have something to say about the exemptions, but that, even though that includes towers, it should not include all towers. So we should be focused on, on anything that has to be, that has to be concerned with what type of frequencies are being received and emitted. So it is a telecommunications ordinance and not a tower ordinance.
Okay, um, do you have any thoughts, Becca?
I agree with that. It makes sense to focus on the telecommunications aspect of it. I don't necessarily disagree with doing something broader, but I think that would take more research into how we want to include those other items.
Okay. So, so then, and I'm gonna, good morning, Lori, and I will welcome you to the meeting, and you're, you're muted, just so you know. Bill, do you have any thoughts on the title and, and what we were just talking about?
Well, I will go along with the, with the Becca and Philippe. I'm not entirely in agreement, but I think we need to move ahead and put something on the table. So telecommunications ordinance.
Okay, and Lori, real quick, we were just talking about the title and the scope, and the consensus is to keep this fairly clean and call it the Wireless Telecommunications Facilities Ordinance. Okay?
I agree with Bill. He spoke for me as well.
Okay, great. So that, hopefully, Ben, you got that. We now have a title. That's section one, title. Section two, authority. I don't think we need to address that, because doesn't that refer to main statute, which, which is generic for all the towns? So we may not need to alter any of that. Dennis, real quick, is that correct?
I, I'd have to take a look at it, honestly.
I assume the attorney will look this over anyway, so that we don't really need to start looking up referring statutes and land use regulation, just the authority right. Okay, moving on. Purpose, we did this. This is, we've covered this, took care of this. This was our mission statement. This is why we were doing this. We took care of this at the last meeting. So we now need to move on. Lori, to recap, our goal here is to work through this or, this ordinance and make any small changes that need to be made, so that we can have a rough draft for maybe one more quick meeting that can be sent to the selectmen for the next selectmen's meeting. Okay?
Sounds good. Can I ask you a question?
Yes.
Um, as I was not being involved with the, the Google effort, are we working with that still? The, the Google Drive?
Yes.
Interaction?
Well, we haven't been using, we haven't been referring to it. We haven't, I haven't been typing into it. I just, just took the printed copy I took last time, because the formatting was off, so that messed with me personally. So if, I mean, maybe you and Ben can talk later, maybe it will be easier for you to retype the final draft, rather than leave it in his lap, but, but let's move on and figure out the, that bookkeeping piece later on. Sounds good? Okay, good. Um, so we are now on, well, what's my page one? Useful to you. The next section is section four, called applicability, and it applies to all construction and expansion of wireless telecommunications facilities, except as provided in 4.1, which we're now going to go on to, and those are the exceptions. Under exceptions, the following are exempt from the provisions of this ordinance. Emergency wireless telecommunications facility, temporary wireless communication facility for emergency communication by public officials. Number B is amateur ham radio. Number C is parabolic antennas. Parabolic antennas less than seven feet in diameter that are accessory use of the property. I don't know if that means direct TV dishes. I'm, I'm not sure what that is. But anyway, I'm going to read them, and then we're going to discuss if we're, if we're okay to move on. Maintenance or repair is another exemption. Maintenance, repair, or reconstruction of a wireless telecommunications facility and its related equipment, provided there's no increase in the height or any other dimension. And finally, temporary wireless telecommunications facility, a temporary wireless telecommunications facility in operation for a maximum period of 90 days. And I assume that means if something is damaged or fallen down. Okay, so those are the exemptions as listed. We're going to take a short period of time, see if we're okay with the exemptions that is listed. Do we want to add? Do we want to subtract? Or are we okay with them as written? Does anyone have any comment?
I do. This is, oh, so go ahead, Philippe.
Philippe, and then Bill, and then Lori.
Uh, I think that VHF antennas should also be exempt, and I think that for parabolic antennas, there should be a height restriction. For, so the same as the other towers, like the, it just says seven feet in diameter, which is nice, but that doesn't tell you you can't put it on a pole.
I, I, okay. Well, do you have a thought on the height?
Uh, I'm not sure what the, the 60 feet is for the ham radio stations. I know that these go up in increments for safety reasons and lighting and all that stuff. Uh, I'm, I'm not really sure about the parabolic antennas. I think any height is, can be visually pretty intrusive. So if you say that parabolic antennas don't need a restriction, the planning board can't review it for visual impacts. Uh, so I'm not really sure about the height in there, but I, I do think that a VHF antenna should be exempt, but should be under the same height restriction as the amateur ham radios, just to make it simple.
Okay, so perhaps we should be stretching the 60 feet height that is listed in amateur ham radios, also to apply it to parabell, parabolic antennas, and also to apply it to VHF antennas. Do I understand you correctly?
Um, I, honestly, I think parabolic antennas should not be exempt. I think that we should have to review it, uh, because those are, that could be, you know, that's sort of a large object. I don't know how you guys feel about that. I was more concerned with the VHF, anyway, but, uh, uh, I, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure. Sixty, a seven-foot dish on a 60-foot pole is a big object.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, can I now go to Bill?
Um, yeah, I just wondered if these exemptions protect us from, let's see. Will they allow us to continue to have the, the tower, the wireless communications tower that we currently have on Islesburg for Axiom? We're not going to run afoul of our own ordinance, are we?
That's a great question, and I'll get to you, Becca, in a second, but I want Dennis to address that.
Uh, just put something in the, the ordinance that it's only applying to future towers, and the legally approved towers already in place are exempt from the ordinance, something to that effect. I'd have to think about how to word it. Generally, in anything, like even for shoreline zoning, for example, they went and said that legally existing structures prior to the time of this shoreline zoning act are exempt. They're okay. They don't have to meet the standard, but then everything after that does. That's the best way to do it. That's generally how it's done.
What if Axiom decides that their current equipment isn't quite meeting the needs of the Cranberry Isles, and I don't know if it is or isn't, and they decide they need to tweak it, or move it, or raise it 10 feet? It would then be, fall under this unless we exempt them.
Well, I, I don't.
If Axiom decides that the equipment they currently have, that is serving the town of Cranberry Isles, is somehow not sufficient, tall enough, needs another five feet, needs, needs tweaking, and I have no predictive nature, I have no knowledge of this stuff. If they decided that, they would not be able to do anything, any, any changes, because they are not exempted under this, because it.
Yeah, so what they would, what you would do in that point, I mean, you could write in some language to that, if, that effect, too. But generally, in that case, I, I don't foresee them having to raise that tower on Islesburg any higher than they'd have to. But what you would do in that case, look, we need, we need to do this, or the system isn't going to work. Once again, I, I think that's a, a long shot, but. Okay, well, our ordinance doesn't allow you to do that, so then what, the planning board disapproves it, and they have to go to the Board of Appeals and say, "This is necessary." Board of Appeal says, "Okay, overrules the planning board. Planning board now has to approve it." Then you change the ordinance, what, take what you've learned and change the ordinance if you have to. But I, I, I think that's kind of would be a, not a very routine kind of thing.
Okay, so can we, so just for, do we even need to have this discussion? Because even if Axiom did do that, and it was totally reasonable, and we all agreed it was reasonable, we could just, we could just over, overrule this, or just accept it anyway? I mean, if, as long as it doesn't exceed a height requirement?
As, as long as whatever, once the, the ordinance is, is approved and put into effect, whatever application you get to do something contrary to what the ordinance now says, the planning board can't approve.
Okay.
But that's okay. I mean, this is not unusual. Sometimes, for example, with shoreline zoning, a person has a lot they want to do something with, but it's, and it's probably perfectly okay with just about everybody, but it's just shoreline zoning doesn't allow it. But if they can't do this, then that lot has no value. I mean, so they, planning board does what they have to do. They disapprove the application, goes to the Board of Appeals. Board Appeal says, "Okay, yes, you, um,
Okay.
It is, we, we can, we can allow you to do this and tell the planning board to approve it." This bill's been through that, I think.
Yeah.
That's just how you do that, but it's so rare, usually those sort of things. But yes, as you're, as you're, as you're thinking about how you want the ordinance to read, think of those little things, and if it's something that is maybe going to be kind of, could happen a few times, just find some wording to accommodate it.
Okay, so I'm just going to note that need to consider exceptions for Axiom, or something along those lines. Did I, Philippe, did you finish? Oh, no. I have to get to Lori, and Philippe, you raised your hand in the middle of, of Dennis's. So I'll go Lori, and then Philippe, and then Becca. Lori?
Okay, I had two quick ones, and you've started to address the grandfathering question that I had. But in specific, since we have a, an antenna attached already to. an antenna attached already to a building that's in the shoreline, if we had to reconsider it in light of that, and then if they decided
Yours?
I'm not hearing anything.
I lost you there for a second. You said grandfathering and I lost you. I don't know if it's my internet. It says my internet's unstable today, so I don't know about anybody else.
No, I'm good. I'm right down by the wharf. But my point is, um, if there's anything that might be an extra consideration uh, that you probably have already or possibly thought of, it's, sorry, just a second. It's in regard to whether it, it is in the shoreline already. It's attached to a building, so if anything happened where the, the contract changed at that, for any reason, not being on the building or moving, do we have an opportunity to revisit it? Uh, with the, the town revisiting the uh, how, how it gets done if it's changed in any way at the boatyard and their agreement with, with Axiom? And then the second thing was, I, I don't know whether we want to consider whether anything could get retrofitted, that existing tower might actually be able to be retrofitted for some reason to be uh, to, to be part of a structure that would allow telecom. And I think we ought to exclude the right to, I think we ought to say there's no right to use pre-existing tower structures to retrofit for uh, for antennas, if that is necessary. So those two things.
Okay. Um, uh, Philippe and then, and then Dennis and then Becca.
Yeah, I think my comment sort of covers that, that um, in our exemptions, we should include um, the uh, replacement or, or uh, replacement or maintenance of existing telecommunications uh, uh, structures. So a tower that is just a tower can't be used for a different purpose.
Right.
You can just stick an antenna on an existing tower, but an existing tower right now is exempt, so that exempts Axiom.
Okay.
If they want to build a larger tower or a different tower, then it would have to go through this process. And also down, down on uh, six, two, uh, on, uh, see if I can find the page. Uh, there is a submission waiver, so the planning board can waive any of those submission requirements based on a written request of the applicant.
Yep.
So that covers what we were just talking about.
Six, two.
Yeah.
Six, one. I'm, I'm getting there.
Section six approval process.
Okay, well, that's good. So I think we can get, so we can kind of move past the Axiom issue. So, so far, the only thing we, we um, hit on is perhaps is VHF exemptions and perhaps addressing a height issue for the parabolics and the VHF. So those are the two things uh, that have uh, hit so far. Now, and Becca, I did not get to you yet. Do you have any thoughts?
I do not have any additional thoughts. I agree with those suggestions.
All right, so we're going to move on to section.
Joanne?
Yes. Yes, sorry, Dennis.
Yeah, when you um, when you were, if you're going to use, uh, you're going to exempt Axiom. Um, it may not always be Axiom, that's our internet provider. I would say the contractor, the internet service contractor, and don't label it to one company. Because that'll cause a problem if another company takes it over sometime in the future. And it's not Axiom, it's, you know, Spectrum or whatever. You see what I mean?
Yes, and I was wondering if all of that was covered by the submission waiver? If the planning board may waive the, I'm sure the planning board can waive the requirements. It just can waive application requirements?
I, 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 I'd, I'd have to look at it in detail. My concern is don't, um, what you want to do is you want to exempt the internet service provider. You don't want to exempt Axiom, the company. You see, you see where there's a difference there? So, so whoever's providing it in the future, um, is, you know, you're not, you're not changing anything or limiting it to one company.
Okay, I wrote this down, so we will come back to this piece. If we make it through most of this or all of this, that's the only thing we're going to come back to so far is maybe tweaking these exemptions. Um, does anyone have any thoughts before we keep going? Because we, I really want to push through this. Great. Review and approval authority, five point one and five point two. Approval required. No person shall construct a new wireless telecommunications facility or expand an existing wireless telecommunications facility without approval of the planning board and the issue of a issuance of a building permit by the CEO. Uh, second part is approval authority. In accordance with six, five point one above, the planning board shall review applications for wireless telecommunications facilities and make written findings on whether it complies with the ordinance. I'm okay with both of those. Does anyone have any thoughts? Can we move on? Good, good, good. Uh, approval process, application. An application for approval by the planning board must be submitted to the CEO and include the following. Uh, documentation of the applicant's rights, titles or interest in the property, where the facility is included the name, address of the property owner and applicant, copy of the FCC license for the facility and, or a signed statement from the owner operator of the facility, attesting that the facility complies with current FCC regulations. C, identification of relevant districts, landmark sites, buildings, structures, or objects significant in American history, architecture, archaeology, engineering, or culture that are listed el- or eligible for listing, and that's important, in the National Register of Historic Places. This, that clause C is, is a big one. I don't know if you want me to read all through E, F, and G, or if we just tackle A, B, and C so far. The only thing I thought about with C is we had this discussion about some of our sites on the Cranberry Isles are eligible for listing, even if they haven't been listed yet. So this might be a, um, a backdoor, um, um. This is important. Does anyone have any thoughts? In other words, I want to keep it. Lori?
I agree and I
Can't hear you.
Oh, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? I agree, and I think we should keep it, and I think, I was wondering whether we might even um, add in parenthesis, including, uh, if we need to, but we could, could be specific. We could say including, you know, cemeteries or, or housing structures or historic um, land features. That would really cover the
Uh, structures or objects significant in American history, archaeology, I think probably covers that, that, cemeteries, but, um.
Cemetery, but I'm wondering about houses that we consider historic that may not be, they, I mean, even if they haven't yet been identified or, and, you know, of a certain age that would potentially have a, like a plate on it or something, you know, that they would consider architecturally significant, that would cover that. But I'm one, also wondering about land features. You know, like bunker head, for example, bunker neck, I mean, you know, the one that we just approved for the for the, for the wharf, such as, such as not putting it somewhere that would be also extremely visible out into the water also.
I think that that come, comes under the site, uh, views and scenics that was covered in
Okay.
The, that may be covered a little bit later. There was discussion about scenic view. It was one of, it was actually one of our, uh, part of our mission, if you say, mission statement, if you will, that was
That's true.
But in my, in my Written was said the following, protect the scene and visual character of the community.
In my experience, the more we repeat it in other areas, even if they, if they knock it out in one area, we'd still cover a concern for it in another area. It strengthens our, our, our ordinance, I think. Um, it doesn't hurt to repeat it in different seg- sections, in other words, for emphasis and specificity. I mean, I
So I I, I've written section six, uh, subcategory C, scenic views and um, historic structures.
Oh, yes, do that. You could say C also, you know, scenic views, et cetera, you know, so that it, it refers to other things that tie into it.
Okay. Um, so did anyone have any other comments about those first three pieces before we move on? Okay, location, this is all what the applicant needs to submit. Location map and elevation drawings of the proposed facility and any other proposed structures showing color and identifying structural materials. And then E, the site plan. Number E one, prepared and certified by a professional engineer registered in Maine indicating the location type and height of the proposed facility, antenna capacity, onsite and abutting offsite land uses, means of access, setbacks from property lines, and all applicable American national standards institute technical and structural codes. Two, certification by the applicant that the proposed facility complies with all the FCC standards for radio frequency emissions. And three, a boundary survey for the project performed by a land surveyor licensed by the state of Maine. Does anyone have any comment on that? Lori?
Because some, some things do not get included that should. I think we should be specific, whether you're listing things by a professional. Uh, it, to include uh, accurate uh, scale indicated and uh, to accurate scale, which is indicated on it, on the map, uh, on, excuse me, on the site plan. And uh, compass bearing. It, it is important that they can't exclude something by saying, well, it wasn't exact or anything like that, you know? So I just think we should, a professional that does, it sometimes includes it, but I've seen, I've seen things uh, given to planning boards that are remarkably uh, absent of, of an accurate scale drawing. So I think while we say it's professional, we should include scale measurements included on site plan.
How about the sentence, a, a boundary survey for the project performed by licensed by the state of Maine and drawn to scale?
I, I like it.
I like it. I think that we always indicate, always indicate bearings, directional bearings. However you want to say.
Drawn to scale with directional bearings.
Yes, exactly. That way it helps line up other plans if you happen to have to coordinate them.
I don't have a problem with that. Anyone else before I move on? Any other thoughts about what I've been reading out loud about submission requirements of the site plan and licenses and locations? Before we move on to F, a part, a continuation of the submission requirements. Okay, I'm moving on. F?
Wait, wait, what?
Go ahead.
Second, we're going to include um, uh, the, the scale and orientation. I think that should be under the professional engineer.
Oh.
Uh, not the boundary survey.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
The boundary survey is done by a surveyor, but not the engineer for the project.
Okay, so would be under number one, prepared and certified by a professional engineer registered in Maine, including location, including the location, and that should be a comma, type and height of the proposed facility, antenna capacity, onsite and abutting offsite uses, means of access setbacks, and all applicable American national standards, technical and structural codes, drawn to, and drawn to scale with directional bearings.
Yes.
Excellent. Well done.
Okay. That's on section E one, Ben. And Dennis. All right. Now, continuing, F, evidence demonstrating no existing structure can accommodate the proposed facility. I like that one because it means we, we don't get redundant. I think this is, this addresses the co-location aspect that we talked about a little bit last week to make sure that people aren't doubling up. Does anyone have a problem with it or anything to say? Okay, G, a signed statement that commits the owner of the facility and his or her successors in interest and assigns to, number one, respond in a timely, comprehensive manner to request for information from a potential applicant in exchange for a reasonable fee, not in excess of the actual cost of preparing a response. Two, negotiate for shared use of the wireless telecommunications by party. Three, allow shared use, if an applicant agrees in writing, to pay reasonable charges for co-location, negotiate in good faith for shared use by third parties. And number four, require no more than a reasonable charge for shared use based on community rates and a generally accepted accounting principles. This charge may be included, but is not limited to, to pro, rata, share, the cost of site selection, planning, blah, 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 keeps going. Site design, construction, maintenance, financing, return of equity, depreciation of all costs of adopting the tower or equipment to accommodate a shared, sharer user without causing electromagnetic interference. The amortization of the above cost by the facility owner shall be accomplished at a reasonable rate over the lifespan of the useful life of the wireless telecommunications facility. This whole section, I really believe, is about, once somebody builds something, welcoming and setting up the parameters by which a se- a third party could join in on the tower, if I'm not mistaken. Is that how you guys all heard that? Any comment? We all okay with that? Give me thumbs up. Give me thumbs up. Are we all okay with it? Good.
I'm okay. Yep.
Okay, so far, so good. Very little we need to address here. Then it says, the following items shall be submitted only if specifically required by the plant, planning board. And this is one of the changes I made when I did the originally review. I just want it to be submitted. And so I want to say additionally, the following items shall be submitted instead of making it ambiguous whether it's required. Do we, do you want me to read it first, or do you want to comment on what I just said? I want to make it required.
Um, uh, this is Bill. I think that's a very good idea, Joanne. We should require it.
I think the narrative is a very, very important piece of the, of any project that gets built. And I think that it should be required. I think it shouldn't be up for question. So that was, so I just wanted to change the words to say additionally, comma, the following items shall be submitted, colon. And it goes on to say H. In fact, maybe we don't need that sentence at all. Remove that whole sentence and just keep going with the submission requirements and remove that sentence completely. And it says H, a narrative discussing the extent, extent to which a proposed facility would be visible from or within a designated scenic resource to the tree line elevation taken with one hundred feet of the facility. And three, the distance of the proposed facility from the designated scenic resources noted viewpoint. That's it for that, and I think we need to remove the word designated because we don't have any. So I think we should just say scenic resources and noted viewpoints. Or scenic view, scenic resources and viewpoints. And get rid of noted and get rid of designated because we don't have noted and designated to the best of my knowledge. Uh, does anybody have any thoughts on that? Does everybody like the idea of removing the sentence, the following items shall be submitted? Yes or no? Good with that?
Yes.
All right, we're removing that sentence, and in the narrative part, removing the words designated. Remove in section, number one. And in number three, designated is removed again, and the word noted is removed. And therefore, we're saying proposed facility from scenic resources and viewpoints. Period. Are we okay with that?
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, good. All right, moving on. I, a written description of how the proposed facility fits into the applicant's telecommunications network. This submission requirement does not require disclosure of confidential business information. I'm, uh, seems, seems reasonable to me. Any thoughts on that?
No.
Good. For the expansion of an existing facility and or co-location, the following information shall be submitted, A, B, C, D, and G. And I would want to add H. And I would want to add H, the one we just mandated.
Good.
Good.
Okay, submission waiver. The planning board may waive any of the submission requirements based upon a written request of the applicant submitted at the time of application. A waiver of any submission requirement may be granted only if the planning board finds in writing that, that due to special circumstances of the application, the information is not required to determine compliance with the standards of this ordinance. I'm okay with that. Any thumbs up or thumbs down? Good.
I'm all right. Yep.
Okay, fees and costs. This did crop up because I don't know what they are. Planning board application fee. An application for a planning board approval shall include a payment of a non-refundable application fee. This the shall not be considered complete. The application should not be considered complete until this fee is paid. I don't know what to say about that. Do we have a protocol? Do we set a high dollar? Any, Dennis?
Yeah, um, background, um, we don't charge, right now, we don't charge for any applications that I can think of except for the flood hazard application. It's $25. If you do want, I mean, this is contrary to any town I've ever known. And I, I think it's great that uh we're uh being friendly to applicants and not causing them a burden by charging them things. Most towns do uh charge and some things, sometimes charge a percentage of the cost of the project, which can be pretty substantial. Um, and just to get more money to pay for their CEO or to pay for administrative costs or whatever. If you did want to charge a fee for that, the way it works with the flood hazard program is every year the board of selectmen is supposed to designate the fee. It's been $25 since we've had it. Um, so I don't have an opinion either way as to whether you want to charge a fee or not. But um it would be only one of two types of applications, um including building permits where we would charge a fee. And then the selectmen have to, you know, I, I would say do it the same way we do it with uh flood hazard if we do it. The selectmen settle a fee for the year, every year.
Okay, um, here's my two cents, and then I would like comments from other people because I do think this is a sticking point. I think this may be the one occasion where we really do want a fairly sizable fee. And I'll tell you why, because I, with there are six or seven cellphone companies and one guy is out there and his only job is to like throw out applications to every town everywhere, where can we throw a tower in? We could be processing, processing quite a few tower applications for 25 bucks a piece, which is a zero investment on their side. I would like to add a deterrent, but that's my two cents worth. Does anyone else have any thoughts? Lori?
I, I completely agree with you, Joanne. I think it should be hefty enough to deter idle speculation and people out there doing it for somebody else, just troving around, uh finding uh places that, where it doesn't cost them anything. Just adding that extra step, especially if it's significant enough, tends to weed out the, um, you know, the wheat from the chaff there. And I think that's important to do here.
Yeah.
If we can, if we, and we should.
Uh, Philippe, go ahead.
Uh, since we have no provision to uh separate a commercial from non-commercial, that means that we would be levying a fee against a person that is building some sort of structure for their own use. We're not trying to prevent them from doing that through financial means. And I don't think a corporation really cares what the fee is. I mean, what are we, what are we talking about? Giving them a thousand dollar application fee versus just a nominal fee like $25? I, I, I think trying to pin some money on this is sort of silly. Do we want to have some sort of revenue for it or not? I think is the question. We're not, I don't think we should be playing a game of, of, you know, of levying finances as a way to prevent an application.
Well, you raise an interesting point also because we did have the discussion, which I'm not sure if we nailed down on the commercial versus non-commercial. I'm not sure why a non-commercial entity would be building a wireless telecommunications facility beyond the
Neither do I.
What?
But neither do I, but that's why I want to leave the question open. Because we don't have no idea what technology is going to look like in the next 10 or 20 years.
So let's say, for example, I myself, my cell service tower, but maybe I would be interested in buying a pop-up little antenna or a tower that I could crank up that would go up 120 feet. My cell service, service would be great. That would be considered a wireless telecommunications facility or equipment, I assume. So I am a private person. It is non-commercial. And therefore I would fall under this ordinance. I'm, I'm positing the question to the group here. I actually think that we're trying to address a corporate entity putting a cell tower on the town of Cranberry Isles. And we, some people may encourage it. A lot of people may feel that it's a huge deterrent to the, to the scenic viewpoints of this island. And money and charging fees so we don't get tire kickers as Lori was talking about, separating the wheat from the chaff is may, is something that we should, I, I think we should think about. But your point is valid. Uh, Bill and then Lori?
I um agree with Lori and I agree with you that a hefty fee is appropriate. Um, if um, um, if, um, if we are to discourage frivolous applications. I further think that if a private individual is in, interested in um a over 100-foot um telecommunications tower, they probably could have, could um be persuaded to pay the fee. So I think a substantial fee would be important.
Lori, and then I want to see if Becca has a comment.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay. Um, so just to, to reinforce that, I do think that it's important. And I, I think Philippe, I understand your point that, that money means nothing to them, but aggravation factor and um, and fighting public goodwill, um, and people that might be so. If, if we're showing that we're determined about this, it sends a message. Um, Poland Spring Water has a ton of, of, um, of uh money, but they were deterred from going into an, we had an organized fight about it and we were, we were together and we had strong opinion. So I think public, public opinion and writing in these ordinances is going to go a long way. But I still think that this is part of it, doing a permit. But to address uh Philippe's point, is there any way we could say that uh, that it would be up to the planning board to waive such a uh um, a requirement, but uh for, if for non-corporate purposes? For non-commercial purposes?
Okay, uh, Becca, did you have any thoughts on this? And then we'll go to Philippe.
I mean, I guess, I'm not so sure about a fee being necessary because aren't there fees associated with, they have to hire an engineer to do all the site plan and the surveyor. So I think there are fees, there are fees just in the process of doing that. And I guess I just don't, since we don't charge for any other applications, I guess I sort of see the point, but it seems unnecessary because they're going to have to be paying for some other things in order to even submit an application in general.
Okay, I think that's a valid point. Philippe?
Uh, I, I think this is a can of worms, bit of a rat's nest. Uh, uh, we're, we're talking about a bunch of different things in one spot that, that uh we don't really have, like, uh, uh, usually an application fee is, is a nominal fee. And we're talking about it as a preventative measure from getting an application, which is now affecting uh, non-commercial and commercial uses, island residences, as well as the people that we're trying to prevent, which are corporations. We're, we're talking, we're, we just, I mean, like, we've already been talking about this for five minutes. I, I, I do not think this is a good, good way to, you, you either want a nominal fee to add something back into the, the money flow, which is fine, but having it as a preventative measure is ridiculous. And also adversely affects residents uh and citizens.
Okay, um, so I am, I'm willing to forego because I think that, I think that uh Philippe and Becca's comment about the proper, merely the, the preparation of the document, the application has been, going to be acquire, uh, require quite a few experts and a lot of money. Dennis, you gonna help us out here?
I think you're gonna run into a legal problem. I'm not sure. But I know there are some things where it is expressly illegal to cause a deterrent, to charge a deterrent fee, or lack of a better word. Um, generally, yeah, I think what, and I'm not sure, I'd have to review, uh, but for applications to go to building permit, whatever, application for a building permit, you're allowed to charge um to recover administrative costs, pay your code enforcement officer, whatever. But I think you are probably going to run into a problem with uh just of adding a fee to it that you can't justify other than a deterrent. I'm not sure, but that's, that's something that is, that's a strong possibility. And it may, that may not apply to this, but it does apply to other things.
Okay, all right. I think we've heard enough not to add this in. You'll all get a chance to vote on the final draft at the next meeting. Uh, Bill and then Lori, and then we're going to move on.
Okay, I would just like, um, thanks, Joanne. Um, I, I would just like to say that um, this um initiative, this ordinance um, is a, is to prevent uh telecommunications, telecommunications towers on the, on the, or to control them. I, I don't think it is um any more beneficial to the health, well-being, or um aesthetic enjoyment of our island, whether this tower is put up by a private citizen or a, a commercial entity. I'd be, I would be no, no happier to have a, a, a private citizen put up a, a giant communications tower than I would be to have US Cellular do it. So I think we want, I, I would like to see us keep, keep that in mind. Um, that it's not commercial versus private uh discussion. It's a discussion about communications towers. Thanks.
Okay, um, what's going to help is when we get into the standards, which it's not standard. Don't care if it's commercial or private. So that will help, be very helpful. So uh Lori, one last comment, and then we're moving on without changing this.
Okay, I, I agree with Bill. I think it should be changed. Um, and I think that I, I, I agree that we should, it should not, as Dennis said, um, you know, it should be, it shouldn't be outrageous. It can't be something that's, that could cause us legal issues. But if other towns are doing it, I don't see any reason to, to not also do consistent that way. Uh, lower or not including any charge. It might, our policies or concerns are, are less uh, you, you know, are, are lesser than other places. The two have, so I think a consistency or at least, at least a, a fee that, that goes, he only knows the range of other, other places, or maybe he does. I mean, I would think 150, it, it sounds to me, application. I think that's reasonable. And I also think it's important to, to show that we mean business. Um, and that's, and if, if it is a private individual, 150 is not going to break their bank. It's, it is a deterrent. I think this whole ordinance is a deterrent. It's a problem.
Right. All right. This is, this is, I think we're going to do, we're going to leave this alone. And I think that this is going to fall ultimately, if the selectmen approve, it's going to fall in the attorney's laps for review. And the attorney is going to have some feedback regarding fees that are uh extortive or prohibitive, legal or not legal. So I think we need to revisit that after it's circulated through uh everybody else. So I think, I think um if you can give me a thumbs up or a thumbs down, we should move on.
Well, as long as we're not excluding it as a consideration.
It's not excluded, we're just not alter a, not specifying the application fee.
Okay.
Okay, uh, the planning board review fee. An applicant for approval by the planning board shall pay all reasonable costs incurred by the municipality. That's a good thing, that are necessary to review the application, including without limitation, independent engineering, planning, legal or similar, professional consulting services. Such review fee shall be assessed for the privilege of review and shall be payable without regard to consultation results or the outcome of the application. The review cost shall be paid in full prior to the start of construction. No building permit shall be issued until all review fees have been paid. From what I understand, this means that if we as a planning board or you, Dennis, incur costs, the applicant has to pay them, basically. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I think most um ordinances have a little spiel like that, that uh shoreline zoning allows us to charge for engineers and legal consultation and such.
Okay, good. 6.4, notice of complete application. The CEO shall review the application and determine if the application meets the submission requirements. If the application is complete, the CEO shall notify the applicant in writing of this determination and require the applicant to provide a sufficient number of copies of the application to the planning board and CEO. If the application is incomplete, the CEO shall notify the applicant, applicant in writing specifying, specifying the additional materials or information required. I think that's pretty standard. I think we can move on.
That's the usual drill. Yeah.
Yeah, sounds good.
Approval within 100 days of receiving. I'm sorry, did someone ask a question? Okay, planning board approval. Within 100 days of receiving a complete application for approval under section five, the planning board shall approve, approve with conditions or deny in writing, together with the findings of which the is that 100 days what the town of Cranberry Isles normally does, Dennis?
Um, what were those time frames again?
Did, did, did I just talk and no one heard anything I said?
I, I caught pieces of it. I think you'll have to re, redo, especially the time frames.
The 6.5 was 100 days. Is 100 days normal for the town of Cranberry Isles?
Um, well, based on this, once again, the shoreline zone thing, there, there is 35 day uh time periods, but um I don't know of anything that has a 100 day, but that may be, that may be appropriate in this case.
I'm okay with it, only because I think we would require some expert opinion and lawyer stuff, so I'm okay with it.
If it's working for someone else, it should work for us. And I'm not sure with, you know, granted, we probably will never need 100 days, but uh it's, it's good to know we have to have some other reviews done.
And 100 days met muster with Owls having their attorney, so I assume it would meet muster with ours. So are we okay to move on? Thumbs up?
Yeah, yeah.
Building permit required. No wireless telecommunications facility shall be constructed or expanded without a building permit, therefore issued by the CEO. Seems obvious. Okay, standards of review, section seven. This is the important part or one of the, and we are making good progress. So is anyone having to leave shortly?
My, my, my deadline is 11:30.
Okay. Okay, section seven, and I'm just trying to get to my section seven. All right, standards of review, approval standards. An application for approval by the planning board must meet the following standards. Priority of locations. Um, we don't have, this, this was an issue because we don't have a communications antenna area, which is delineated. So this sentence should read perhaps, what priority of locations? New wireless communications facility must be located on an existing wireless telecommunications facility, the construction of which had previously been approved by the planning board. Or the application shall demonstrate that such previously approved facilities cannot reasonably accommodate the applicant's proposed facility. That's a so I edited it and changed it a little bit because section two said it must be in a communication antenna area. We don't have that. So I, what I just read you was an edit I sent you all a while ago. Lori? Lori, you raise your hand? Go ahead.
Yes, and I, and I like what you rewrote, but where you said they're proposed, they're proposed uh plan, uh if, if someone adds on to, uh, to it with an agreement for somebody else, you know, to add, add features on to it, uh, it, it might also have to include the concern about any potential future additions to the, to the tower.
I think that's addressed, I think, isn't that addressed about, design for co-location is number B, which we haven't read. And I think that has some specs. design for co-location is number B, which we haven't read, and I think that has some specs about co-location. Philippe, you raise your hand.
Yeah, I was wondering about this uh uh in, I, I think in a lot of the uh proposed, proposed ordinances, uh many of these towns wanted to have um a tower. So they had a communications antenna area. What I'm wondering about for us is, as we read a while back, we can't flat out deny um a telecommunications tower. So if all private landowners were to um deny the, uh, having one on their property, wouldn't it fall to the town to basically have to provide an area? And whi- which is why I think they, there are communications antenna areas set up by towns either because, one, they want to have telecommunications or two, because basically they have to provide them. I'm, I'm not really sure about, about this, but I'm, I'm, I'm wondering how much we have to uh consider that.
Well, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think a lot of towns do want the towers because they do wanna be able to communicate. And they also wanted the towers in specific locations because if it was gonna be a necessary evil, they wanted it to be in a specific place. But I don't think that's our angle here. And I think the purposes of what we're doing here is to get something out there that allows us some control. So I'm not sure if you're wondering if we should designate an area or if you're wondering why it was there.
Well, I, I sort of feel like uh, you know, um, I think what we're doing is great and sort of covers this. But we would, we, we're gonna have to be ready for the fact that we might ha- have to designate an area at some point. And uh, you know, like the, the area on Islesford with the existing tower would be the place where a cell tower would have to go if all private landowners didn't wanna have a cell tower on their property. Because we have to provide access for a telecommunications facility.
I, I completely agree. I think it's outside the scope of what we're gonna be remotely capable of doing in such a short period of time. So I think we
I just, it was just, it was more something that I was thinking about, just, you know, as we read through these things. Um, that's all.
Uh, Bill, and then we're gonna move on.
So are we, seems to me that we should strike that number two, that identify, forces us to identify an antenna just
Oh yeah, that's why I rewrote that. Uh, the way I read it, I took the liberty of rereading it with its, uh, with, by blending the sentence and getting rid of that piece because we don't have it. So basically, priority of locations was about if there's a tower there and if it can meet your need and it, you, it, then you need to use that. And if you can't use it, you need to prove why you can't use it. That's what the first section I read was about, I believe.
Yeah.
Now, design for co-location is B. And it says, a new wireless telecommunications facility and related equipment must be designed and constructed to accommodate expansion for future co-location of at least three additional wireless telecommunications facilities or provider. However, the planning board may waive or modify this standard where the district height limitation effectively prevents future co-location.
I think that's good. It gives us lots of control.
I agree. I agree. Anybody else? Uh, Lori?
I'm, I think it, if there is a tower that's currently in a place that has an aesthetic component, we, where we wouldn't wanna add anything, anything more to it, and I'm thinking maybe on the dock at some future point. Uh, you know, even if we allowed one tower of some sort or expanded a height on it, at some point, we wouldn't necessarily wanna require that, that somebody else, we wouldn't wanna have language that would encourage the ability to have more towers attached to it. So I think we should say exceptions may be at the discretion of the planning board on that one, uh, dependent on, on um location. I don't think it should apply to all rules in, in all cases, that they must.
So for example, the uh Axiom Tower in the middle of Islesford's gravel pit. If somebody came in and said, hey, I wanna get in on that action, we might object to more material being on that tower? Is that what you're wondering about?
No, I'm saying in the future, if there is a tower that's in a rather sensitive location, we wouldn't want to to insist in any way or, or even give them the right to think that they were encouraged to do it by attaching to a, to one that's in a sensitive area. So I think we should have ultimate discretion about whether we are gonna let that tower be used in, in that particular location where there, it's in a potentially sensitive area aesthetically.
So how about however, the planning board may waive or modify this standard and put a period there?
Exactly.
How does, can I get feedback from others? And so that sentence that says, however, the planning board may waive or modify this standard where the district height limitation effectively prevents further co-location. Uh, the proposal is to get rid of the section, that part of the sentence that, that says where the district height limitation effectively prevents and just leave it at however, the planning board may waive or modify this standard.
If that's legal, I think it's a good solution.
Any other, okay, Lori? Okay, I'm crossing out that sentence, that half of the sentence. All right. Height. A new wireless telecommunications facility must be no more than a hundred and fifty feet in height. That's a big, okay, how do we feel about that? Feedback, please. Lori?
I think it's too high. I think it's too high personally.
Okay, um, I believe, I believe our, our Islesford Tower. Sorry, I interrupted you. I think our Islesford Tower is a hundred feet tall. I don't know how tall it is on Cranberry. Go ahead, Bill Dowling.
Is this height above sea level or height above the ground where it's built? Which has a, you know, there are places where a hundred and fifty foot tower would be three hundred feet above sea level on these islands.
There's a definition later on.
Uh, definition, oh, good. That's because I knew I'd read definition somewhere that talked about at uh where you measure from. So let's make sure that's in there, Bill. That's very important. Becca, did you have any thoughts or anything to add? Okay, Philippe, you go with it. Oh, wait, so we need to talk about is a hundred and fifty feet? How do we feel about a hundred and fifty feet?
Joanne?
Yes.
So, one of the reasons that the appeal of, of putting a, the, the appeal of coming to an island and putting a, a very large tower up here is that you have a panorama of places that could access it um off the mainland. And I would think a great deal of, of MDI surrounding us could benefit from us if we, if we had a, a, a tower at a, at a height you know, at, at that amount. And it even goes to me beyond aesthetics. I think that tower could be um in the future potentially um strengthened and desirable for that ability. So I think that the restriction is, it's actually a very important part of our ordinance. And I think we should go to a hundred. I think it should be a hundred from the height because the height could be higher than that.
Well, this is an important thing. If we are not allowed to say, I'm sorry, no cell towers. If we, then our, our cell tower ordinance would just have one sentence, we do not allow cell towers. But if we're not allowed to do that, because we are required to have these standards, if we were to put in an ordinance that says, I'm sorry, no cell towers over seventy-five feet, then we are in essence saying, sorry, no cell towers, because nobody can use a cell tower in seventy-five feet. So I'm not sure if the one fifty is arbitrary or if that's an FCC designated number that, in other words, if we said no towers taller than fifty feet, we wouldn't have to write anything else in this ordinance because we'd be done. So I'm not sure how we can address the one fifty with, without more information.
I think we need more information.
So
Go for it. Let's try for it and then see what the lawyers say.
Um, I think Swan's Island, Swan's Island did a hundred.
Well, why not do a hundred? It doesn't make any sense to give, give them more if we don't have to.
Yes, Swan's Island said not over a hundred feet.
There you go.
Can uh, can we get some feedback here if we are, would like to change the number one fifty to one hundred? Dennis, go ahead.
Um, I think you should, I think you're perfectly, you're allowed to uh make a maximum height of whatever you want. And what you could do is say uh towers will not be over arbitrarily a hundred feet. However, the planning board can um waive that on a case-by-case basis for um, for cause. There's something along those lines, but they're gonna really have to demonstrate why they need to go more than a hundred feet or seventy. I, I think seventy-five would be better. I think get it down to fifty, that'd be even better. Uh, I don't, for your own purposes out there, why would you need a tower more than fifty feet high? I guess you do for the internet, but um you know, or just go with your existing tower, whatever the height of that is. However, the planning board may um, may approve exceeding that height on a case-by-case basis with um you know, for, for, for cause. If there's a, a, a good reason and the, it can't be accomplished with a shorter height.
I'm okay with writing a hundred feet. How does anybody else feel? I mean, if I were the case, I would be okay with writing fifty feet.
Me too, me too.
Make it fifty, and then if it has to be more, you can, you can on a case-by-case basis with sufficient cause, uh, make it go up to a hundred or whatever.
Right. Yeah, I agree.
Philippe, I know you have something.
Yeah, I was trying to, trying to find, see if I could find any numbers online. Um, there's gonna probably be a minimum height that a telecommunications, like a cell tower can be. And we don't know what that number is. Uh, so um just throwing out an arbitrary number is great, but it, it may get into a legal conflict if it's below the height of what a tower can be. We might wanna figure that out.
Well, I don't think we were completely arbitrary at a hundred feet because another town adopted that ordinance. So I don't think we were totally arbitrary. So I could only assume that Swan's Island through their attorneys as well. I can't find anything in Northeast River One. Um, I actually think this is maybe the most important part of our ordinance is the height. And I'm looking at Shabig now. Sorry, I think I'm, I think we're bogging down here and I, I don't really wanna do that. I'm trying to find height. So um, should we note this and, and um let's put a, we gotta put a number in. So I wanna solicit feedback on what number needs to go there. I'm not in favor of one fifty. I'm in favor of a hundred. Bill, go ahead.
Um, you know, the Coast Guard, the, the old days when they put up lighthouses, they had to be a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five feet tall. And the lighthouse on Bear Island is like forty feet tall because it's on a promontory of land. So I don't think that we have to make the height. Um, I think we should get a minimal height. And perhaps that will uh affect where, where the tower is sighted. So um, I am, I, I would propose that we um set a limit of seventy-five feet if we, if it, with the uh, uh, planning board's ability to um make different, make modifications to that requirement as needed.
Okay, Philippe, uh, and then I'm gonna go to you, Lori. I'm reading the height definition under definitions. And it says, height means a vertical measurement from a point on the ground at the mean finish grade adjoining the foundation as calculated by averaging the highest and lowest finish grade around the building or structure to the highest point of the building or structure. So it really doesn't address what promontory of land it sits on. So if the promontory of land is sixty feet higher than sea level, then you would take that sixty feet and you would add the hundred to it and have it be at a hundred and sixty feet height versus a hundred feet height. So it doesn't define sea level or anything like that. So Bill, you were proposing seventy-five feet?
Yep.
And Lori?
If Dennis said that we could put fifty in and that it would be subject to lawyers hemming and hying, I say we start with fifty and we can move up if we have to. If he said it, then he's not, you know, Dennis has some experience in this. I don't see why we can't start at the low point and move up. Uh, why not? There's nothing to me, that seems reasonable. And if somebody does want um more height, you know, we have high places on this island. You know, they could contract with, you know, you could get a lot more height if, if that's the issue, if that's the goal. But some places low down here, fifty feet can be high.
Okay, so um, so I've heard fifty and I've heard a hundred. Um, so now let's nail this down and move on. Bill, are you
I will support Lori's um, uh, 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 suggestion of fifty feet.
Okay, um, Philippe, how about you?
So the only cell towers that I've been up close to, I really didn't wanna be any closer to them than I had to be because they emit a lot of uh radiation. Putting a tower, putting the actual transmitter down lower is, is a safety concern. And I don't know if there is a minimum that they have to be at. I, 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 I think we might be better off putting in some language like the tower needs to be as low as, as possible, you know, for its intended use. Uh, if we have a maximum number, how tall did we say the tower on Islesford is? Maybe just use that as a cap.
It's a hundred, isn't it?
Hundred feet.
How high is the one on the building at the, at the, at the Cranberry Boatyard?
But you need to bear in mind that that hundred-foot tower is at the bottom of our gravel pit. And the bottom of our gravel pit is what, ten, twenty feet below the surrounding area?
Well, that, that would come under our um, uh, consideration of uh, of viewpoints and, and scenery.
I feel like we're being arbitrary. I feel like we are not using legal standards and I'm not, I mean, it sounds like most of us who are doing this document would just as soon say twenty-five feet other than the equipment being near you as it was going. So I'm a little worried that we're sort of going willy-nilly without any real guidance on this. And, and we might need some professional advice on this number.
Good point. Thirty, may I speak? And, and then I'm gonna go. I just think that fifty feet uh to me is still quite high. I think that's around the height of the saucer that's on the boatyard. Um, and I think that if we have to make it higher because the, it's not solid enough legally, that's for the experts to determine, but we're trying to make a, a strong ordinance um and a restrictive ordinance on purpose. So why not go with the restrictive amount? And then if we have to, we can adjust it. That's all I wanna say. I think now's the time to be restrictive. If we have to give, then we give. Um, and I have to go, sorry.
Okay, thank you, Lori. What, Becca, do you have any thoughts on this? And then Dennis?
I disagree. The number seems arbitrary right now, and I'm sort of having trouble with arbitrariness as well. So, I mean, I was leaning towards a hundred because of the, because of the existing tower and because of what other, you know, like what Swan's has done, but lowering it, I just feels arbitrary and I'm not sure.
Okay, uh, Dennis?
Um, I would just say I, I'm, I'm not gonna offer opinion. I, my personal opinion is keep it as low as you can. Um, on the other hand, when, if you're requesting something, request what you want, okay? Don't worry about is it legal or will it end up being tall enough? We'll figure that out later. Someone will tell us if we can't have what we want. Uh, but uh, I would, I would say what, what you want is what you should put down. And if someone has a problem with it, then you can, you can deal with it then. And maybe you won't get what you want, but you get something. Don't ask something you don't want, trying to, trying to um satisfy something we don't know. So ask, ask for what you want.
Okay, Shabig, under Shabigs, it says structural requirements. Telecommunications towers shall be designed and installed in accordance with the most recent current standards of the Electronic Industries Association. with the most recent current standards of the Electronic Industries Association, EIA. Quote, structural standards for steel antenna towers and antenna supporting structures. So there are standards out there that are written up and specific. Tower height, under Shabig, towers shall not exceed a height of one hundred. Swan's Island, towers shall not exceed one hundred. So we can, that's not arbitrary. Those are numbers in two other ordinances. Both islands on the coast of Maine, and that's not arbitrary. Now, we can shoot for the fifty and have to moderate, or we can put the hundred because that's what we're seeing in other locations. So in the interest of moving on, we need to make a decision. We're, we're doing well. I think our next meeting, I was hoping it was just going to be a quick review of the draft, and I'm not sure we're going to make it because I think we're going to lose everybody before we can get through this.
Yeah.
So. What are we going to say? I need an answer.
I still support Lori's fifty foot limit. You can always raise it.
Becca?
I would say a hundred.
Philippe?
I'm going with a hundred. You already have a hundred foot tower and it puts it above the tree line. I, I just don't see the point in putting in a lower number that we're like immediately going to have, to have to change. It seems like we're not putting our work in.
Uh, I'm sorry, Bill. I think I agree with the hundred two. But this is going to go through selectmen. This is going to go through all the voters. So I think there will be room to readdress and research it, but I think we probably should stick to only because it's, it's a standard that's already met, met muster.
Do we need to move and vote? That's fine with me.
No, I don't think, we need to move and vote on a final draft when that comes. So then there's a section called setbacks.
I'm sorry, I can't be here any longer. I'm pretty late for taking a guy out in a boat, so I'll.
Okay, so let me ask you guys, should we do this one more time? Because then we're not going to have, and then rely on the, a final draft. We're not going to see the final draft. What hap, when we finish this up next time, it's going to go to the selectman because there's not enough time. So to do a final review. Are you feeling comfortable with what we've done so far and that Ben has heard everything, all the changes we've made so far? That we've finished this up the next time and then send it off to the selectman without having another meeting to review the draft. I'm hoping, Ben, that you will be able to send out a draft to us prior to the selectments meeting in case something catches the eye that was fairly big.
If I've got the copy you're working from there, I certainly can.
Okay, all right. So this is what we're going to do. It's eleven thirty. We're going to stop now. I'd like to do another more meeting next Thursday or Friday. Whatever works for our legal stuff. I think we need seven days and then, and then we'll finish this up. We're doing really well. We're almost there. We're just not going to make it today.
Okay, whichever day, Thursday or Friday at ten is okay with me.
Okay, is everyone agreed that we should adjourn now and finish this up next time?
I agree.
Good, me too.
Okay, I move that we adjourn. Okay, we have a second from Philippe. Joanne Thorman votes aye. Becca Powell?
Aye.
Bill Dowling?
Aye.
Philippe Donald?
Aye.
Thank you, everybody. We'll see you next Thursday to finish this up.
See ya.
Bye.
Bye.